Can I bang the gavel?
Oh, God. It's about 30. Next time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is now 5:30, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Georgetown County School District's regular board work session meeting. And as we begin, I'd like to issue a special welcome to our three newly-elected board members who are here in the audience. Thank you for coming and welcome. Today's date is Tuesday, November 15, 2022. Please join me in a moment of silence and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two public comments this evening, and your time limit will be three minutes. The first one we have... And forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Ms. Desiree?
Desiree.
Desiree Young.
How y'all doing tonight?
Good evening.
All right.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Desiree Young. I would like to know why the board is selecting a director to be over the magnet schools tonight when the new board members have not yet been sworn in. What is the rush on selecting the director for the magnet schools when no one from the school board or the superintendent has not been out to our communities where the five schools are going to be magnet schools and to give us any information on these magnet schools that are to be opening for the next school term? The disrespect, lack of information, and no communication speaks volumes to our communities, parents, and how our board members are treating their constituents. It is evident that this board and the superintendent does not care what we think or our input on how we would like our community schools to function. When, I mean, we, the communities, and parents would like a meeting ASAP to discuss all information regarding the magnet schools and how all of this, meaning the schools coming from regular schools to magnet schools, came about. We also want to know where the funding come from, who signed off on it, and how is this funding going to be distributed? We want to know all information, financial and otherwise. After we, the public, get a clear understanding about the schools that are coming into our communities, then we feel that you can proceed further with getting a director for these magnet schools. Also, I would like to know, why did the board choose a superintendent without a doctoral degree when there were two others that were highly qualified with doctoral degrees and experience when our current superintendent is in school getting a doctoral degree? I ask this question because maybe we wouldn't find ourselves in the situation that we're in had we had someone experienced that would come out and speak with us. My next question, how is it that our current superintendent, from what I was told, has his wife and niece working at the district? Is that not nepotism? We want answers, and we've got questions, and we would like for y'all to answer that. Thank y'all so much.
Our next speaker, talking also about magnet schools, Ms. Cooper Alveria.
Everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
I'm a resident of the Carvers Bay Attendance Area Schools. I try to attend every meeting and keep up with the schools in my area. I have grandchildren in that school. I have cousins, nieces, nephews, all attend that school. I'm a regular attendant of the school. I participate within the schools. We never heard a word. We was to your last board meeting. We asked Mr. Price to have a meeting with us or send out some information where we could have a meeting. We never heard a word. It is like you overlook us. You could care less. I have a question. If we were Walkham Mall, you wouldn't do that. This is 2000, the year 2022. These unsubtleys, these little lines, these practices has got to stop. It's a new day and a new time. Please recognize us. I bleed, you bleed. We all use the bathroom. We are all on equal footing. We say we love the Lord, but at the cross, we are all on equal footing. Please get yourself together and stop ignoring us. We want to know about these magnet schools. We have no information. We have nothing. You ram it down our throats. We are not taking this lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Minutes have been properly moved and seconded as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Opposes? Minutes have carried. We'll have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposes none. The agenda has been accepted, and now we have, under action items, personnel list. The administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented.
They're moved.
Second.
The personnel list has been properly moved and approved and seconded as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Motion has carried. Now we have the certificate of delegates for the 2022 Delegate Assembly. The board will appoint three voting delegates and up to three alternative delegates to participate in the South Carolina School Board Association 2022 Delegate Assembly on Saturday, December 3, 2022, during the SCSBA's annual business meeting. This meeting will be held in conjunction with the SCSBA 2022 Legislative Advocacy Conference on Friday, December 2, 2022. Do we have any volunteers or nominations? We are allowed up to three delegates.
I'll do, I'll be one.
Any other volunteers?
I would be one, but I do have a question. Will the new members be eligible to attend?
Will they be eligible to be nominated or work as alter-- as an alternate?
Yes, they could. They actually assume their position among the board this Friday, so they... And this conference doesn't take place until after that date, so they would be eligible as well.
I would like to nominate Robert Cox.
And I would like to attend.
And nominate Lynn. Is that... Did you nominate yourself?
Yes.
Okay, good, 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 good. Just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Sandra, you did as well, right?
Yes. I would be willing to be an alternate if one of the new ones wishes to be a delegate.
Well, we have three, there are three positions, three delegates and three alternates, so...
Other spot?
One, two, three, four.
Up to three alternates.
Up to three alternates?
Yeah, you have to have three delegates, but you can have up to three alternates. You don't have to have three alternates.
A total, I got you. So we have so far, Ms. Sandra Johnson, Randy Walker, Robert Cox, myself.
I remember, will Randy Walker, Robert Cox, and yourself be delegates?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Johnson's an alternate. Okay.
As an alternate, can I nominate?
Then nominate two more if you want. Alternates, if you want.
I move that we accept the delegates as have been designated.
Second?
Second.
Question, discussion?
Just clarification that the delegates are Randy Walker, Lynn Forward, Robert Cox. Sandra Johnson will be an alternate.
Correct. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Opposes none? The motion has carried. Ms. Amanda, you have all that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Now we have, moving on, policy IKF graduation requirements. Ms. Lindsay Ann Thompson.
Good evening, Chair Lady Ford, members of the board and Mr. Price. I have the final reading for policy IKF and then the administrative rule that goes along with it, IKF-R. This is the third time we've discussed both, both of them. But as you're aware, policy IKF itself is where the graduation requirement would be, which just refers to the State Board of Education being the body that determines what is required for a high school diploma in the state of South Carolina. And then it also has a paragraph in there about the new endorsements that aren't quite so new anymore, but that are now included in state law and state regulation as part of the high school diploma process. So that's policy IKF, just getting rid of some of those specifics that change pretty frequently, putting those into an administrative rule and leaving the policy as the general overarching statement.
Any questions? The administration recommends second and final reading approval of policy IKF graduation requirements as presented. May I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Motion has carried. All right, now the administrative rule, IKF-R graduation requirements.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So IKF-R is where we decided to put the more specific requirements that do change a little bit more frequently, that are updated every couple of years generally by the State Board of Education. And it has the, you know, where you have your basic 24 credit union, credit units, and then some of the more specific pieces about which courses can count. We made the change that Ms. Hamel had suggested. We made the change that former member Dr. Graffero had suggested about awarding of high school credit where it says a school. We slashed that and put in a principal or his or her designee. I mean, I think those are the only, those changes were presented to you last time, so no changes since two weeks ago. And that's all I have on that one.
The administration recommends first and final reading, reading approval of administrative rule IKF-R graduation requirements as presented. May I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Opposes none? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Okay.
Now we have...
Thank you.
Still here.
Removal of policy exhibit JHCD-E.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So this is an information item that'll be brought before you as a vote at the next meeting. But just so you're aware of what it is, we had a very outdated form left in the policy manual that we've not used in a long time that just simply needs to be removed. It was administration of medication by district employees. Now there's a much more specific and very detailed set of two forms required by the State Department that are, do not need to be included in the policy manual itself because they're state forms, they're not ours. So, you know, what I'm going to ask you to do at the next meeting is to remove the old form, the JICDE-E, and then we're not going to replace it with anything simply because those are already required by the state. They're on our website, they're on the state's website, they're everywhere. And they're, the two different forms are permission for the school to administer prescription medication, and then the other one is for non-prescription medication. So that's what I'll be asking you at the next meeting, but I'm happy to field any questions tonight if we have any concerns.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We'll now have Dr. Barineau talk about national assessment results, SAT, ACT, and AP.
Good evening, Chairwoman Ford, Superintendent Price, board members, and others. If the board would like, I have one presentation to present for all three agenda items, and we'll just go through the one presentation without stopping for each agenda item. Maybe? Okay. I promise I didn't touch anything. So tonight I will bring you additional spring data that we have not brought to you before. We'll look at all of our graduation rates, specific components of the state report, our district state report card, and then we'll actually look at the report card itself. This first slide will show you the graduation rates for each of our high schools, including the, our district averages and our state averages. We had three of our high schools, including our district graduation rate, that was higher than the state's 83.3, 83.8 for this year. Those are indicated by the green circles. Next slide. A part of our report card is career and college readiness. One part of our career readiness is our career readiness certificate or certification. That would be the win and work keys for last year. If you recall, last school year, in the fall, we took win, and then in the spring, we took work keys. So we're not able to have an overall for the district as far as each of those individual assessments. However, this breaks down each school, the district, and provides you the state the percentages at each level. Just to remind you, for the state report card, career readiness is considered at the silver level and above. There are a few points that I would like to point out. Our district overall is up five tenths of a percent over '21, but we're not quite where we were in 2019, so we are increasing and making progress. Andrews High School actually is nine tenths of a percent higher than 2021 and 4.7% over Georgetown High School increased 1.4% over last year, over '21, and Carvers Bay increased 11.5% over '21 for those certificates earned. So we are having our increase in certificates earned. What we're noticing at is the increase is at the bronze level, so we are making progress. And hopefully, we're hopeful that that will continue, especially with the things that we have in place to get our students ready for these assessments. Next. This looks at our SAT over the four years. SAT actually provides us with a report annually that we can look at and pull data from. What I would like to let you know or remind you, and I'll also remind you on the next page, the SAT and ACT have been optional for college entrance since 2021, which has impacted the number of students that we are seeing taking the test. So you may see a decline in our numbers, and we feel that because of the optional being there for college entrance, that it has impacted our numbers being tested. Okay? What you'll notice here is we have broken it down by all students and by race and ethnicity as well as gender. That's your first two sections. What we've shown you is the average composite score. That's the overall. Now, the ones that are missing, and I apologize for that, actually, can you back up one? Yeah. Here we go. This is the SAT, and it's the same. It's broke down by race, ethnicity, gender. The scale score range, we've broken down even further for you. The scale score range shows you that a student who tests can score from 400 to 1600. The first four columns show you the number that tested in each scale score range. Then the other areas show you the percentages. Met benchmark at the top, that is what SAT says is needed or defines students as college and/or career-ready. Students are considered college and career-ready when their SAT section scores meet both the math and the evidence-based reading and writing benchmarks. I have highlighted, where you see two or more, it's highlighted in yellow. We only had five in '21 and eight students in '22, so we do not have data for those. It only reports out when you have 10 or more in a subgroup. That's why you also see it blacked out on the scale score range at the bottom as well for '21 and '22. Any questions on that? Next. This is the ACT broken down. We also get a report annually from ACT. It doesn't quite break it down as SAT, but we tried to pull some of the same information so that you could see how our students tested in regards to each of these national assessments. At the top, you'll see race, ethnicity. Your first four columns are the numbers tested for each of those four years. Average composite score, you need to have a composite score of 20 or higher to be considered college-ready on our state report card. So that lets you know for the four years. We actually have increased two tenths of a point, two tenths, from the composite score in '19 to '22 for all students. Met for college readiness and met all benchmarks is again defined as those students who are college-ready. Scale score ranges for both SAT and ACT are set by that assessment company. I would like to point your attention to the very bottom for the math, reading, and English scale score range. If you, a 20 or higher, now remember, 20 or higher is what you need for the state to consider us student college-ready or us college-ready. So if you look at from 20 to 23 and up, so from 20 to 36, for English, we've actually increased from 32 to 35% from 2019. For math, we actually increased from 26 to 28%. And for reading, we've increased from 39% to 42%. Now, the 42 is slightly lower than 20. In 2020, we had 43, but we are, we're all getting back up there, and we are higher this, in '22 than we were in '21 and '19. Any questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
Is this the last time they took ACT or SAT, or is this...
This is the annual report. So they took all the, all of the times they assessed and combined it to a district report for us.
Okay, so if they took it multiple times, those are represented here?
Yes.
Okay, because that, the numbers didn't add up, and you were, I was trying to figure the number of students is to their percentages.
So I didn't pull our ACT scores like each single report. This actually came straight off the report sent by ACT.
Okay, so this was multiple times students could have taken them?
Yes.
And their composites?
Yes. It just looks at it at an annual rate.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, next. This is our advanced placement exam or AP. We actually do not receive an annual report, so these are straight, pulled straight from the data bank or data system that we have access to through College Board. What I did was I pulled the reports that we have access to so that we can compare the four years. Your graduating class would be your 12th graders who, like it said, graduated that year and took an AP course and the exam and scored a three or higher. Your 11th grade, same. It was the 11th graders that year who took an AP course. 10th grade, same. And remember, they have to score three or higher. The middle shows you the number of tests that were taken and the percent that scored a three or higher. So it could have been students have, took multiple AP exams. If they had two AP courses, then they would have taken two AP exams, or maybe four, since we're on four block. This is just your annual overall.
So just, oh...
I was just wondering, could we get data how it's broken down by high school for the advanced placement?
Yes. I'd be glad to do that.
That'd be good, good information.
And just so I understand what you just said about the area. So for 2022, 57.8% score of students scored three or higher on multiple AP?
Yes, and of those 57.8, you can look up at the top, it's off by two tenths of a point somewhere. I'm not sure because I pulled it straight from AP. But of that 57.8%, 17.2 were 10th, 14.5 were 11th, and 25.9 were 12th graders.
Some are?
Some are 9th graders, correct?
In here?
No, but we do have 9th graders.
We do have 9th graders who take.
Yes.
The very bottom was something that added so that you could see the recognitions that we do have from College Board for our AP students. that we do have from College Board for our AP students. You notice we've had an increase in our AP scholars. From 2019, we dipped slightly by one from 21. We've held steady for 21 and 22 for AP scholars, but we've increased since 19 and 20. And then AP scholars with distinction is definitely higher than the last previous years. Any other questions, Matt? Next slide. This is our access Spring 22 data. This is what our students with, who are multilingual language learners now, are English, previously known as our English with second language. On our report card, we look at, it's called LEP, our Limited English Proficiency Rates. For the access, there are four areas we look at: reading, writing, speaking, and listening. What I've done is broke that out for you so that you can see the number of students that we tested. We tested 354. And in each area, the number and the percentage who scored at least a 4.0. You have to have a 4.0 in each of the sub-areas with a composite of at least a 4.4 to be considered English proficient for our state report card.
How frequently do our students take this? For the multiple?
The access is annually.
It's done annually in the spring?
It is.
And what grades is that given?
All are great, all.
Kindergarten through 12? First, okay.
Yes. The majority is an online assessment. I believe it's kindergarten, that's writ, that's paper pencil. Is it just? K2 is paper pencil. If you notice the green areas, that just lets you know where we're up. Reading, we actually increased from 21. We were 41.4 in 21. We're up to 44.3. Speaking, we're up from 14.1 to 15.5. Listening is green because it was our highest area. We are down slightly, but it was the highest percentage of students scoring a 4 point or higher. The next slide. The previous slide broke it down into the four areas. This actually shows you how it's reported out on the report card. It's reported out by the composite score, which is the students' average over the four areas, the four sub-areas. We had 61 out of 354 students who scored a 4.4 or higher as a composite score. That's slightly down. We were at 19.83 in 21, and we're at 17.2 this year for 22. English proficiency, again, you have to have a 4 point in each of the four areas and at least a 4.4 on the composite for this percentage. The number of students who scored that 4.4 were 14 out of 61 who had the composite score. So we had 61 students who had the composite score, but only 14 of those had enough in each area. So we have students who actually score extremely, have higher than the 4.4, but we have one or two areas kind of, it knocks them out with having to have the four in each area. But we are up. It's 23% from 11.6 in 21. And then that 14 is out of all of the students who's tested. It's 4%, which is actually an increase for 21. So we are seeing increases. And I would say Ms. Smith and her teachers and collaborating, what have you. I know when I work with them and we look at the data, they are really involved in looking and seeing where their children are so that they can be intentional in how they proceed with those lessons that are taking place. Next slide. And this looks at the four-year trend for the same assessment. The green highlights the highest, which were English proficiency is your four. It's the highest in the four years. And the blue, the 15.5 is speaking, and it's the highest over the four years. Any questions? Next slide. We're going to look at our state report card comparison. What we did on this slide was took our ratings for four years from 19 to 22 and put them across on a chart for you to look at. Our first area is kindergarten readiness. Kindergarten readiness has an overall percentage rate. It also breaks it down into the four areas of social foundation, language and literacy, mathematics, and physical well-being. Due to COVID for 21, we did not score social foundation nor physical well-being. That's why you see the black box. If you'll notice, we have an increase from 22 over 21 in our overall, which is lower than our 20 and 19, but we are getting back on track from COVID based on our percentages for 22. Language and literacy. We are higher than we were in 21. And math, we're actually have an increase from 21 and over 19, and we were even with our 20 percentage points. For physical well-being, we're not quite where we were in 19 and 20, but we aren't that far behind. We don't, we aren't falling that short behind, 2.7% and then the 3.9 in 20. Our next looks at our first and second grader students on track for success in ELA and math. The way these percentages are determined is each school submits their summer surveys, and they actually input the number of students who have scored a Pacific Score on the Spring I-Ready. For our English Language Arts for second graders, we actually are scoring at our highest for Spring 22 than the other three years. For second grade math, we have an increase from 21 and 20, but we're not quite where we were in 19. We're slightly lower by 1.3%. First grade English Language Arts, we are the highest from the other three years at 75% compared to 69.1 in 19. For first grade math, we are, we have an increase from 21 and 20, but we're not quite where we were in 19. However, we are making that progress towards getting back to where we were pre-COVID. The next session, this is what we just talked about with the access. This looks at the students' percent of EL students who met progress towards proficiency. We have an increase in 22 from 21 and 20, but we're slightly less than we were in 19, but we are on the upward bound for that and looking positive towards being pre-COVID in the spring of 23. Our graduation rate over the four years, we had a slight drop this year. However, we met our other goals that you can see as it's broken down. For our students who are college or career-ready, we increased from 21. For students who are college and career-ready, we had an increase from 21. Students who are college-ready, again, we had an increase from 21. And career-ready, we had an increase. The blacked-out areas are, in 2019 and 2020, we didn't, the state didn't exactly report college and career readiness as it has since 21. When it first started out, it was strictly you were career, you were college. It didn't break it down between being or or and. Any questions so far? Our academic achievement, these are our SC Ready, SC Pass, and EOC scores that we have already reported out on. However, as you know, on the state report card, it reports out on met or exceeding and scoring C or higher for EOC. When we report out to you, report out on passing rate or higher. So you may see some differences in the percentages that we have on our report card compared to previous presentations. We do have, we did increase in English Language Arts and Math for SC Ready. SC Ready ELA was an increase of 7.2% over 21, and Math was a 3.7% increase. English, too, we were less than 21, but we were an increase from 2019. So we didn't quite make where we were in 21, but we have met or exceeded our percentage from pre-COVID. There any questions? That's all I have. There are no other questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bearnaugh. We now have the Cognia Feedback and Activity Report by Mr. Price.
Good evening, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. You may recall that this year Georgetown County School District is going through its accreditation process. This is a process that we go through once every five years. If you've heard the phrase, "That's an accredited school" or "An accredited school district", this is the, Cognia is the association that reviews the standards that are put forth by the school district and does an evaluation and assessment of the different components. There are 30 different standards that the organization takes a look at to award accreditation to a school or a school district. Well, part of that accreditation, part of those standards, one of those addresses specifically district governance. And so that's where you all come into play. So part of our work session today, tonight, is going to be an activity where you get the opportunity to provide your input. And so the input that you provide will go into our supporting evidence for our report that we have to submit to the accrediting agency, Cognia. Next slide. So it's standard eight. The standard eight reads, "The governing authority demonstrates a commitment to learners by collaborating with leaders to uphold the institution's priorities and to drive continuous improvement." And so there are different, there's a rubric that provides different scores based on standard eight, and there are some driving questions that we can pull from that rubric. Next slide. So with the evidence collection, you're being asked to provide your thoughts on how you feel the board supports the district with standard eight by answering the following questions on the form that has been provided to you. Next slide. So here are your guiding questions. Number one, how does the board, based on your input, individually and/or collectively collaborate with leaders throughout the district? And leaders is a broad title, so it can encompass a variety of different leadership positions throughout the district. So this is a chance for you to share how you work individually or collectively with different leaders throughout the district. Number two, in what ways does the board uphold the district's goals, policies, and priorities? And that can be you individually or you as a collective board. And number three, how does the board support and drive continuous improvement in your role, again, individually or collectively? And then finally, how often does the board review and update policies? So you all have a form that you've been provided, and you certainly have the opportunity to fill that out now. You may have filled it out in advance, but this is a homework assignment. So it gives you all a chance to provide your input, which will be included in our report back to Cognia. Are there any questions about the questions or the tasks that you were being asked to submit? Yes, sir?
When's this homework due?
Our report, it's not due today. It is not due today. Our report is not due to Cognia until, we have our official review coming up later in, I believe it's March 31st. There was a time when the accrediting agency would show up, and there was a time that rather than it being a district accreditation, it was an individual school accreditation. And they would spend anywhere from two to four days at a school looking through their entire educational program. Then it shifted to a district-level accreditation where they report out the processes for all schools. And now, rather than an in-person visit, they do a virtual visit. So a lot of this information will be front-loaded, and then they will have a Q&amp;A session and a day-long virtual review with us where we have to present information and answer questions. That'll be on March 31st. Our upload date? February 1st is when we have to upload all documentation. I would humbly request that if you could get this back to us by the end of November, that would be great to keep us moving along. Like I said, we have 30 standards that we are citing, our proof, and providing documentation to support that.
I have a question.
Yes.
And so this is an individual, I can send this to you?
Correct.
From me?
That's right.
Or we can discuss it?
You can.
Or this is something that, you know, I mean, we can work through it and?
I'll give you, I'll give you an example. One of the things, we've done some activities with Cognia with our cabinet-level leadership team. We've also done activities with our principals in our joint leadership meeting. And so there's oftentimes where we give individuals a chance to think and reflect first and write down things that come to mind. And then there's an opportunity that we built in for a collective sharing because someone may trigger a thought by something that they share that, oh, I remembered one. I'd like to add this to the list. So if anyone would like to share any thoughts, you can do that at this time. If you'd like to collect them individually and submit them later, that's fine as well. Yes, sir?
A thought that came to me as I was trying to answer these questions is, I don't know if we plan to do a board retreat, and then we did one, because some of these, some of this, we need some time just to discuss to, first of all, come with a completed sheet, then share.
Absolutely.
You know, how does, I think one of the questions that catches me is how does the board support and drive continuous improvement? And my thoughts there is that, you know, what is a model for that? You know, I have something written down here, but what's a model for that? What, in a perfect world, what is that, what is the school board doing there?
Gotcha. You're asking me?
Yeah, I mean, I will, but that's something that we need to reflect on.
Right. It's really defined by each individual board.
Right.
And how much, how involved and to what degree and to what levels they want to do that. And a lot of it is governed by policy.
Right.
And to look at how our policies govern the board's interaction. And to look at how our policies govern the board's interactions with these different areas and whether or not we are meeting the expectations of the policy.
Because as we move forward, I think that's, this is really important, especially question three, and all of them are important, especially questions three and four.
Yes, sir. And I think last time we did a board retreat was last November. And so
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, believe it or not, time flies.
Because as a new, as a new board, you know, I remember that workshop setting our priorities as a board.
That's correct.
We have three new board members, and we need to do that again.
We'll have an opportunity to do that again. If that's the wish of the board, we can certainly collaborate with everyone, set a date, and come together and with an approved-upon agenda.
Okay.
An email did say, bring it with you. So I did my homework. But I mean, still, after discussion, I'd like to be able to add to this.
Absolutely.
So I don't want this to just be the base of what I do.
Sure.
Do you want me to grade it for you?
She's a teacher.
No, I gotta add to it.
An English teacher.
I get satisfied with that.
Well, speaking of English teacher, you sent it to me to proofread last night.
I did. A smart English teacher always sends it to somebody to proofread.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, the next three items come from Ms. Lisa Ackerman. Sole source and emergency procurement summary fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Good evening, Ms. Ford, members of the board, Mr. Price. The next three information items, I'm gonna speak to them collectively, if that's okay. All three of these items are required by our procurement code from a reporting standpoint. Sole source and emergency procurements are very well-defined in our code. They allow us to procure goods or services without competition, and there's very strict guidelines for what is acceptable and what is not. If you will look at the very first report that we've submitted, the sole source summary, we allocated and spent $238,000 in sole source procurements. That is actually down from last year. The emergency procurement summary is at $33,000, and that is down from last year as well. Those are very dependent on needs, particularly the emergency procurements. Typically, they are maintenance, building, repair-related. They don't always have to be, but again, very dependent on what is happening at the school level. Any questions on that initial report?
Just when you say the word sole source, and I'm looking at science kits on here, can you give me some more information about that, what this really is?
Sure. In the sole source arena, really, the term to us means you can't purchase that anywhere else. Those science kits are part of a curriculum. And actually, as I was doing the report this year, I err on the side of caution. There actually is an exemption in our code as well that would probably cover the science kits from the standpoint of them being educational supplies. But again, I err on the side of caution. We included in the sole source summary, our auditor actually audits every entry on the sole source side of transactions as well as emergency procurement. So again, I err on the side of caution. So probably could have covered it as an exemption, but I don't typically, historically. The next report is the MBE Business Progress Report. The district has a plan that the board approved many, many years ago. Our goal for that is 10%. We did make some progress this year, albeit rather small. State-certified minority participation, and I say minority, it's really small minority women-owned businesses that we're targeting. We're at 0.27% this year, and those are vendors that are certified out of the office in Columbia for small and minority businesses. So it is a small population of vendors, if you will. We utilize three of those vendors that are on that listing and certified at the state level, so that gave us the 0.27%. We go one step further. We also certify at the district level because a lot of those vendors, particularly in our area, they don't care to be certified at the state level. It's not going to gain them anything. So a lot of our local vendors are not state-certified, but we certify them locally, again, as I said. So I include that number as well because I think that's an important picture for people to understand. We're at 5.92% with our district-certified small minority women-owned business classification as well. Any questions there?
I might have questions, but I can't get my, I can't get my document to open. But if I have a question, I'll come back to you later.
Okay. I actually have a hard copy, if you want. Do you want that?
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
And the final report that we present this evening is the surplus sale summary. That has remained surprisingly stable since last year. I was actually shocked at those numbers. So this is a summary of everything we've sold through surplus. We're just less than $14,000 last fiscal year. I'm sorry, yeah, last fiscal year. The prior fiscal year was actually a little over $14,000. I don't know how we did that, but stable as it can be. And again, that's all surplus equipment and supplies that run through as excess and obsolete That concludes the reporting of all of our required reports. Is there anything that I can answer for you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Now, it's time for any board or superintendent comments or requests. It's on you.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, good evening again, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I would like to begin by congratulating and welcoming our recently-elected board members, Mr. Robert Cox, Mr. Scott DeBeaus, and Mr. Keith Moore, who are in attendance in the audience this evening. They will officially take office this Friday, November 18th, and they will be sworn in at the next board meeting on December 6. We look forward to working collaboratively with each of you over the next four years to help make Georgetown County School District the best that it can possibly be. And I'd also like to thank, take this time to thank Dr. Michael Cafaro for his service the past four years on our Board of Trustees. Dr. Cafaro, during his four years on the board from 2018 to 2022, he supported our district's mission with his insights and unique expertise. He worked diligently to ensure that our policies and procedures ensured the safety and success of all students and employees, and we are grateful for his dedication and service to our district. This week is American Education Week, and so this week we celebrate all the employees and partners who make the American education system what it is. Teachers, custodians, bus drivers, counselors, media specialists, administrators, cafeteria workers, the list goes on and on and on. And each of them are a critical component to the success of a quality school system. So please, if you haven't already, take every opportunity to thank all of those who make the American education system what it is, especially here in Georgetown County. And since our last meeting, we have added another state championship to GCSD. Congratulations to the Waukamahe High Girls Tennis Team for winning the 3A state championship over Chapman High on November 5th by a score of 5 to 1. And then this past Saturday, the Waukamahe Girls Cross Country Team came up just a few points short of winning back-to-back state championships, but finished as the runner-up to Phillip Simmons. Congratulations to these teams for winning and finishing runner-up in the state championships. And then finally, next week, we celebrate Thanksgiving, and I want to wish everyone a restful and fulfilling holiday. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We now have executive session. May I have a recommendation for, to adjourn to the executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we will retire to executive session. Everybody, do I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, here we go. We have a motion for executive session action item.
Yes. Chairperson Ford, I move that the board approves the recommendation of Superintendent Keith Price that Constance may be hired as the Magnet School Assistance Program Project Director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we have, we're about to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
It's too early.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.